Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. We do appreciate your attendance and for those who are checking in by TV, thank you for tuning in. For introductions, on my left is Commissioner Bill Avery and on my right is County Commissioner Todd Wilchin and Vice Chair. I am Commissioner Roma Amundson, Chair. And so assisting this morning, we do have Dave Durbin from the County Attorney's Office, Kelly Lundgren and Dan Knowlty of the County Clerk's Office and Carrie Egan of the County Administrative Office. So will you all join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and thank you so very much. And Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Initially, a copy of all material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one, or minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, July 19th, 2016.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Are there any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number two, or claims, approval of all claims processed through July 26, 2016.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next is a public hearing, manager application for Craig Keschel in connection with a Class One liquor license for Lincoln Isaac Walton League, Chapter 65, at 10,008 1 South 134th Street, Bennett, Nebraska.
We'll open this public hearing. Is there anyone to speak in support of, in opposition to, or in a neutral position to this manager application? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and let's go on to correlating item four A.
This is a resolution in matter of corporate manager liquor license, application of Craig Keschel in connection with a Class One liquor license in, for Lincoln Isaac Walton League Building Corporation at 10,008 1 South 134th Street, Bennett, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve this resolution. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Four B is a resolution authorizing installation of the following sign in Lancaster County, install a 25 mile per hour sign on West Wasong Drive, 75 feet east and Northwest 30th Street for eastbound traffic.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this resolution. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. C is a special designated license application for Myers Wine, Inc., doing business as Myers Cork and Bottle for reception on August 12, 2016, at Roca Berry Farm at 16531 South 38th Street, Roca, Nebraska.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the SDL for Myers Wine, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. D is a special designated license application from WMJD LLC for the Frog Fest Music Festival on August 20, 2016, at Blue Sim Tree Farm at 5895 West Sprague Road, Crete, Nebraska.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Heath McCumber. I'm a managing member of WMJD LLC.
Okay. Any questions that you would have for the gentleman?
What does WMJD stand for?
It's just the LLC. We do, we own and operate the Single Barrel, just down the street here.
Okay. Oh, okay, so the Single Barrel is one doing the...
Yeah, it's DBA.
Okay, all right. Okay.
I would move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the SDL for WMJD for the Frog Fest. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. E is setting this annual salary for Jason Cooper, Deputy County Attorney, in an amount of $60,305.44 as Attorney One, effective August 1, 2016.
Good morning. My name's Joe Kelly, Lancaster County Attorney. Here to set that salary for Jason Cooper, $60,305.44 as an Attorney One, effective August 1, 2016. We like to have the attorneys here so that you can meet them. I can't accommodate that today because Jason is in the middle of his move from where he lives now, Chicago, Illinois, to Lincoln, Nebraska, and he starts on Monday. Jason's name may sound familiar, Cooper. His grandfather, Sam Cooper, was a well-known prosecutor in Omaha in the Douglas County Attorney's Office from the 60s, 70s, and into the 80s. And his brother, older brother, Sam Cooper, already works in the Lancaster County Attorney's Office. We're glad to have Jason aboard, just as a little background. And we will get him in front of you, I hope, soon to, so that you can at least meet him and put a face with the name. John Marshall Law School in Chicago, Illinois, is where he graduated from law school, May 2014. He was in the top 6% of his class at the John Marshall Law School and on the Law Review at that institution. He's a UNO graduate, an undergraduate. Presently, he's clerking for a judge in Chicago on the Circuit Court of Cook County. In law school, he also served as a clerk with the Illinois Court of Appeals. So, very good credentials. We're happy to have him. He'll fit right in, and he is licensed in Nebraska as well as Illinois. So, Jason will be with us, as I said, effective August 1, and we'd ask you to set that salary.
Sounds like he has a tremendous background and he's keeping up the family tradition.
Really is, yeah.
Okay.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve the annual salary for Jason Cooper. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Four F is a grant contract addendum to the Lancaster County Visitors Improvement Fund Grant Contract between Lancaster County and the Lincoln Children's Museum, amending county contract CDS 16-1 to extend the completion date of the grant contract from August 1, 2016 to September 1, 2016. All other terms of the grant contract remain in full force and effect.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this grant contract addendum. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. G is Nebraska Emergency Management Agency 2014 Subrecipient Agreement for the Southeast Region in the amount of $148,232.69 under the State Homeland Security Program, federal grant award number CFDA, number EMW 2014 SS 5497-67.
Good morning. Jim David Saver, Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. This project is part of the 2014 grant funding year for the Southeast Region to support the NREN project, which is the Nebraska Regional Interoperability Network. It allows the 14 counties in the Southeast Region to continue our effort to implement all the resources and equipment necessary so that the region will be part of the statewide communication system.
Well, that's a very nice-sized grant. It really is.
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved in seconded that we approve this grant contract addendum to the, excuse me, to the, excuse me. It's been moved a second that we approve the Emergency Management Agency Subrecipient Agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Upstain.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries two yes, one abstention. H is an agreement with Region Five Systems for Emergency Protective Custody Services at the Mental Health Crisis Center. Region Five will enter into separate agreements with referring counties who will send acutely mentally ill individuals to Lancaster County. The county will be paid $186 per individual per day. Term of agreement is July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this agreement with Region Five Systems. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. I is a contract between Mary Angela Abthorp, M.A., L.A.D.C.P.L.M.H.P. in Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Center for Certified Alcohol Drug Abuse Counselor Services. The services will be provided at the rate of $85 per evaluation completed and $32 per hour for other services. Term of the contract is July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this contract for Mary Angela Abthorp. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. J is an agreement with Dr. Klaus Hartman for professional services of a psychiatrist, assist in the provision of psychiatric services at the Mental Health Crisis Center on an as-needed on-call basis. The county shall pay $650 for 24-hour period of coverage. Term of the agreement is from July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this agreement with Dr. Klaus Hartman. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. K is utility permit number 1453, allowing Mid-America Pipeline to repair existing gas pipeline adjacent to 190th Street and Waverly Road. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve utility permit number 1453. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Four L is utility permit number 1454, allowing Black Hills Energy to install natural gas lines adjacent to South 98th Street. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval.
Mr. Clerk, did you read?
There's a typo. Yeah, there is a typo.
It was a typo, yeah.
Okay. I will second.
It's moved in second that we approve utility permit number 1454. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. M is utility permit number 1455, allowing Windstream Communications to construct communication lines adjacent to South 63rd Street and Bass Creek Court. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve utility permit number 1455. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. N is an agreement with Nebraska Oral and Facial Surgery to provide specialized medical care and assistance to Lancaster County General Assistance Clients who have pending claims with the Social Security Administration and may be eligible for retroactive Medicaid benefits.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Human Services Director. This morning, the next 21 contracts are mine on the agenda. So, I will be up here going over them. I'll try to go through them as fast as I can, but they're all equally important. So, I'll try to share information on all of them. These next two contracts, item N and O, are for contracts for our general assistance clients. Again, the way that our contracts work with them is all of our clients are pending SSI, SSDI, and Medicaid benefits. So, once we pay a provider, then once that client becomes eligible for Medicaid, we ask the provider then for reimbursement.
Based on that explanation, I will move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the agreement with Nebraska Oral and Facial Surgery. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. O is an agreement with Prairie Orthopedic to provide specialized medical care and assistance to Lancaster County General Assistance Clients who have pending claims with Social Security Administration and may be eligible for retroactive Medicaid benefits.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this agreement with Prairie Orthopedic. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. P is a grant contract with CASA, an amount of $10,000, to provide funding for the court-appointed advocacy for crossover and high-risk youth program. Term of the grant contract is July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017.
Okay, and CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. And this organization trains volunteers to work in our court system to advocate for children who are involved in primarily its abuse and neglect cases. This specific grant is through Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds, which is county-based funds. It's that amount of money that we use to match our community aid funds and our other grant funds that are drawn down from the Crime Commission. So, these volunteers are trained in working with children in the court system. For this specific contract, they're focused on crossover youth, which crossover youth are those children who come in and have the first filing as an abuse and neglect case in our juvenile court system. And then, once they've been involved with court for a while, then if they cross over, which is where the term crossover comes from, and oftentimes, they may pick up a truancy case, meaning they haven't gone to school, and so now the court has filed on them for truancy. Or they may also pick up a law violation. So, they've crossed over from our abuse neglect system over to our law violating system. This grant focuses on serving those children. During the last six-month reporting period, they served 191 children. 35% of those were those crossover population in this contract.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this grant contract with CASA. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Q is a grant contract with CASA, an amount of $5,000, to provide funding for recruitment, training, and support to CASA volunteers. Term of the grant contract is July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017.
And this funding is through our Joint Budget Committee funding. Again, Joint Budget Committee, you have county funds and you have city funds that are pulled together to fund different community agencies.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve this grant contract with CASA, in the amount of five grand. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. R is a grant contract with the Good Neighbor Community Center, an amount of $75,000 for the Basic Needs Program and Food Pantry and Perishable Foods Program. Term of the contract is July 1, 2016, to June 30, 2017.
And this, again, is funded through the Joint Budget Committee funds. And I might add here, and I brought this up too during the budget hearing, that joint budget committee funds, although they are often referred to as a non-mandated service, it's one of those services that if we were not to fund it, it would become an unfunded mandate because you would then see it over in your general assistance budget. And when looking at different counties' budgets, I did a comparative analysis, and again, I shared this at the budget hearing, but I want to share this again. For pulling different categories out, if you pull out our client transportation, the amount of money we spend in our county on transporting clients through our general assistance division, we spend the same amount of money as Lincoln County does, which is North Platte, which has a much smaller population base. Again, too, looking at Omaha, which we're often compared to, Omaha has a rent budget of over 1.5 million that they provide. Ours' rent budget is 40,000. Again, we send our clients to these community agencies first before we fund them through general assistance dollars. So, Good Neighbor Center, through this contract with Joint Budget Committee, they provide closing, household items, hygiene products, holiday gifts. Clients come in, they do an interview with the client to see if they're eligible. 90% of the 3,000 clients that they serve during the last six-month reporting period were at that 100% poverty level that we see. So, clients in the community in need of services. They also offer the Mina Hope Project there. That's the Middle Eastern and North Africa Hope Project. It's for, primarily focuses on women, Arabic women, who are newly immigrated here. And they provide citizenship classes for them, ELL classes. They help women get their license, help them with education. They also do exercise activity class with these women, too, to try to increase that bonding and support effort there. So, very needed service in the community, Good Neighbor Center.
It's a fantastic program.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve this grant contract with Good Neighbor Community Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. S is a grant contract with Houses of Hope, Nebraska, Inc., an amount of $40,000, providing funding for the Halfway House Program. Term of the contract is July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017.
I would just add that Houses of Hope is one of the only halfway house in a 16-county region for men who are struggling with substance abuse. So, very needed service.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this grant contract with Houses of Hope. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. T is a grant contract with volunteer partners, an amount of $10,000, to assist youth with law violations, finding successful placements to complete community service requirements. Term of the grant contract is July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017.
This is a contract through our Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds, that county-based funds for juveniles. This contract, within the last two months, has saw 68 referrals. That's a significant increase than they've seen before. And that's because when the county assumed the case management responsibility for the juvenile diversion program, most of our referrals ended up going then to volunteer partners to help plug that youth into different community service learning opportunities within Lincoln. They also have worked in the last six months with 25 seniors who need their GoPole hours in order to graduate. Volunteer Partners is also starting an online database where they're plugging in portals within the high schools where kids can actually get on a computer and find different volunteer opportunities within our community.
Is this a sufficient amount? That's a lot of work.
Yeah, we've talked to them and I think probably in the upcoming year, we'll try to get more community aid funding through the Crime Commission for them because they are struggling. They've seen a significant increase in referrals.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this grant contract with volunteer partners. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. U is a grant contract with United Way of Lincoln, an amount of $6,750, providing funding for the Food Distribution Services Point Project and Grants Management Software Program. Term of the contract is July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017.
And this is to fund a system called ServicePoint that tracks the amount of food that is given to our community residents in need of that service. I just received the latest Lincoln Food Pantry Report from the Center for Children, Family, and the Law. It was released on July 6. In there, it says that 41,190 insecure people in Lancaster County received food through this network. That's about 14%, 14, 15% of our total population who receive food through some of these agencies. Agencies included in this, in ServicePoint, Salvation Army. That's the primary avenue that people in our community are getting food, according to the survey. People City Mission, Indian Center, Good Neighbor Center, Catholic Social Services. And one thing that's different from this report, it's an annual report, than years prior to this, is that the Center for People in Need is also included in this. And this was pretty significant in that they don't use ServicePoint. They have their own case management system. And so, the evaluator on this particular report has worked pretty diligently on including CPIN's data in here and Center for People in Needs data. So, I have this report on file. If anybody's interested in looking at it, it's interesting. And it does, it does say a lot about the individuals who are living in poverty in our community.
You didn't mention the food bank.
Oh, and the food bank, too. Yep. They're not specifically, they're not in here because that's their primary function. These are just agencies that, serving food is another function, but yes.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve this grant contract with United Way of Lincoln. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. V is a grant contract with Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders Counties to provide funding, an amount of $2,500, for the Language Link Program. Term of the contract is July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017.
And this particular program provides interpretation for some of the services there.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve this grant contract with Community Action Partnership. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. W is a grant contract with Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders Counties to provide funding, an amount of $100,000, for the Basic and Emergency Needs Program. Term of the contract is July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017.
And this contract focuses on residents in our community who are homeless or at risk of being homeless. Services provided include emergency services, which are rent payment assistance to families who have received an eviction notice and utility assistance to families who have received a shut-off or disconnect notice. And then, it also provides services for the representative payee. So, this is an important service that's afforded to our general assistance clients once they do receive their SSI or SSDI. It's for individuals who have been found to be unfit to manage those benefits. When they come in, then they will assist them in making sure bills are paid and so forth before that SSI, SSDI payment goes on. And then, they also provide tenant support services. So, for our residents who have had problems with landlords, maybe, they provide mediation services and try to help facilitate those eviction issues that are occurring. Let's see, and then, they also have homeless vouchers, too, for people who are in need of rent assistance, maybe, in that way. I do want to share, because this is a pretty significant contract, and I want to share one of the stories that they submitted to me, just to kind of give you an idea of the population that's being served. Melinda was seven months pregnant when she was told she was no longer welcome to stay with a friend she had been living with. With nowhere else to go, Melinda resorted to living in a tent. Almost two months of living in a tent every day in the increasingly cold fall weather, she gave birth to a son who she named Jackson. Emergency Services Programs, through this contract, was able to provide a rent deposit assistance so Melinda and Jackson could move into a place of their own. Emergency Services Staff worked with Melinda to develop a budget and referred her to Community Actions Early Head Start. And Jackson was referred there when he was old enough. So, it just kind of gives you an idea of how this funding is actually helping individuals with our community.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve this grant contract with Community Action Partnership for $100,000. for one hundred thousand. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 4X is a grant contract with Christian Heritage to provide funding, an amount of fifteen thousand dollars for relationship workshops for youths detained at the Youth Services Center. Term of the contract is July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
And during this last reporting period, they served thirty-nine youth and seventeen parents.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve this grant contract with Christian Heritage. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Y is a, is a grant contract with Cedars Youth Services to provide funding, an amount of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars for the Emergency Shelters Program. Term of the grant contract is July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
And during the last reporting period that ended June thirtieth, they served nine pre-adjudicated youth in their emergency shelter and a total of seventy-nine. So, of the seventy-nine, nine were pre-adjudicated youth. Moving forward, this will look a little bit different, and they did receive a decrease in funding, just because the state is now picking up the responsibility for this pre-adjudicated youth.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this grant contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Z is a grant contract with Voices of Hope to provide funding, an amount of five thousand dollars for the Crisis Interventions and Advocacy Program. Term of the grant contract is July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
And during the last reporting period, they served over one thousand women. There were services that they provide, and I, I should mention too, that while you only see five thousand in this particular contract, this is one that's split between the city and county. So, the city is picking up the other thirty-five thousand of this contract. They, through this contract, they provide a twenty-four hour crisis line, crisis, short-term counseling, they have a drop-in center from nine to four, where victims of domestic violence and sexual assault can go to seek assistance. They offer free childcare there. They also offer domestic violence women's support groups at the Asian Center, at El Centro de las Americas, and at Malone Center. They have advocates for sexual assault victims that meet them at the hospital and provide assistance in that way. They also have advocates that attend court hearings with victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. And then they also participate in our sexual assault response team and threat advisory team.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve this grant contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. A, A is a grant contract with the Center of People, for People in Need, an amount of five thousand dollars to provide funding in the, for the Neighborhood Food Program, which provides food, information, and referrals for low-income residents. Term of the contract is July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
During the last reporting period, the Center for People in Need distributed over one point five million pounds of food. There, they distribute food at the F Street Rec Center, Malone Center, Oak Lake Church, and Fourth Presbyterian Church, as well as the actual Center for People in Need Center on Twenty-seventh Street.
And I think that we do need to make one correction here. Term of the grant contract is July first, twenty sixteen, correct?
Yes, yes.
Right. Through June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. Okay.
With that correction, I will move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this grant contract with Center for People, Center of People in Need. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. 4BB is a grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Operation Tipping Point Program. The Commission will provide sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty dollars, and the Lincoln Police Department will provide a match share of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars for a total project cost of eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. The grant period is from July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
And this is state funding through the Crime Commission. This is a collaboration between the Lincoln Police Department and the, and Lancaster County. I've asked our gang outreach coordinator, Matt Baker, to come, to break up the monotony of me speaking for this time, and also to give you more information too, on this program and how he works with children throughout.
Since I started here...
Could you say your name again, please?
My name is Matthew Baker, Operation Tipping Point Coordinator. Since I started November, we've had thirty-five referrals. Working on five referrals as we speak, I, I'm assuming that we're going to get all five. We have twenty-one youth in the program right now, two women, all minorities. All twenty-one youth are participating in the program. I have fifteen youth that are meeting expectations. I got four youth that are exceeding, and then the rest are kind of what I would say is not quite meeting expectations. However, those youth that aren't, they're actually making strides in improving their life. Kind of what we do, or I guess what I do as the coordinator, I kind of view it as three-prongs. Schools, the schools have opened their doors to me, I'm allowed to go to the schools, speak with youth that they're wanting me to speak with, go talk to the youth that are enrolled in my program. So, that'd be one prong. The other one is the guardian, whoever the youth is living with. We're going to try and make that a full circle at home. We have programs that I work with that also involve the parents. And then we really try and work on the behavior at home and the relationship between the youth and the guardian. The other one will be just the youth in general, what does the youth like to do? We really strive on dreams. I tell, the first thing, my message for the youth is, have a dream. I don't care how big it is, you know, we're going to dream big. Great dreams lead into great things. We, that's kind of really the foundation of how I talk to the kids. I tell them, hey, look, if you want to go be an astronaut, let's go be an astronaut. And if you do it the right way, the worst thing that's going to happen is you're going to get an education, you're going to go to college, you're going to meet youth that are on the right track. So, it's really, we're really trying to get to those dreams, but really, we're trying to reach the outcome of trying to get those dreams. And I think that's a message that not only all kids, but especially my kids. Usually, the biggest problem with any of my youth that I talk to is, none of them believe that they can be anything. So, that's why gangs are really kind of where they want to go to. And then when we can kind of get them away from their friends, away from the media, and them to really start to think about what they want to be, then that's really where we make progress. I got a kid right now, he wants to be a physical trainer. I have a kid right now who wants to be a head chef. I have a kid right now who wants to be a doctor, a teacher, a fireman. So, these are all things that we label them as. We label them as what they want to be. Because as soon as they can stop labeling themselves as either a gang member or someone that wanting to be a gang member, then everybody else can label them as something positive. So, that's kind of what we do. I work with all programs in Lincoln. I mean, literally, any nonprofit program you can think of in Lincoln, we work with. We work with the hospitals, they've kind of outreach to us. Right now, all my youth are participating in these programs. However, in the summer, it's kind of died down a little bit. So, I've kind of taken on more of a mentorship role with these extra hours with them, not in school. As soon as school picks up, then they're going to start kind of getting back into the routine of going to school, after-school programs, and whatever it might be. That's kind of in the short, I don't...
Well, no.
Go ahead.
I mean, thank you for that great explanation. I mean, you've pretty much done a good job summarizing why, why what Sarah does and what the county board, with partners in the community, make investments so that, they're investments. Because what happens if we don't make these investments? They end up costing taxpayers more money. Not, that, just that's the monetary value, but the societal value, the societal values are also immeasurable because, you know, these are lives you're dealing with, and they're at risk. And it's important work. So, I want to thank, thank you on behalf of the county for doing a great job, and keep up, keep up the good work, and let us know if you need anything.
Yeah, awesome. And just speaking on that, right now with the issues Belmont's having, we're really trying to figure out, kind of, I don't know if it's going to be an event or a march, but we're really starting to try and plan on something to do with that community. We did have a big event at F Street Rec, which had a huge turnout. I just, it was really positive feedback, so we're trying to get to the same gears with Belmont. So, I'll let you guys know, keep you guys in touch. I don't know how fast it's going to move, it really just depends on the resources that I'm able to use.
Okay. Well, it's, it's a great program, my goodness, yeah.
I will move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this grant program with the Nebraska Crime Commission for Operation Tipping Point. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. CC is a grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Arts Inside Program. The Commission will provide five thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars, and Lux Center for the Arts will provide a match share of one thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars, paid for a total project cost of six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. The grant period is from July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
This is a state grant that allows for the Lux Center to go out to the Detention Center and work with kids. They do art classes with the kids. The last reporting period, they served two hundred and seventy-two youth. Kids are enjoying it.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve this grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Artist Inside Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. DD is a grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Power Hour Program. The Commission will provide eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and the Boys and Girls Club will provide a match share of twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for a total project cost of twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. The grant period is from July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Boys and Girls Club is located at Park Middle School. It's a program that a lot of kids like to attend. They have built-in Power Hour Program, which is basically a homework zone. They have certified teachers on hand to help kids with their homework. One of the requirements of going to Boys and Girls Club and getting supper there and participating in all of the fun activities they do is they have to attend this Power Hour session. So, for the last school year, they served five hundred and eighty kids. They had twelve different classrooms. Six of these classrooms were focused on sixth graders. They spend a lot of time providing tutoring assistance with math, because we know that math scores are important as you continue your education on. The other, the other six classes are divided evenly between the seventh and the eighth grade.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this grant commission with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Power Hour Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. EE is a grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for their School Engagement and Parent Support Program. The Commission will provide forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars, and Families Inspiring Families will provide a match share of four thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars for a total project cost of fifty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The grant period is from July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Okay, this is federal money coming through the Crime Commission that we've applied for and received. Families Inspiring Families serves two different populations through this grant funding. The first population they serve is through our truancy diversion program. They offer two functions there. The first one is to provide evidence-based curriculum to youth attending the, who are enrolled in the truancy diversion program. Then they also offer parent support. They have parent advocates who have also had children in the juvenile justice system, so are familiar of that aspect of it. So, that's one of the prongs that they provide through this contract. The other one is we now have a family advocate at the Detention Center, ten hours a week. And so, that advocate reaches out to all first-time law violators who end up at our juvenile detention facility. They reach out to the parents, to make sure the parents understand when visiting hours are, different things that will happen, and just are there for support for parents who have had their kids come into detention.
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve this grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries two yes, one abstention. FF is a grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for Project Success Program. The Commission will provide forty-six thousand dollars, and Lancaster County will provide a two thou, a five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar match for a total project cost of fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The grant period is from July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
And this is, again, federal money that, from the Department of Justice, that comes down through the Crime Commission that we've applied for and received. This is for our Project Success Program, which we've presented on before in front of you. Just to summarize it again, it's from our Disproportionate Minority Contact Committee is how this program was first thought up. And basically, through our Disproportionate Minority Contact Committee, we go through and we look at every system point in the juvenile justice system, so beginning with arrest, all the way through a secure placement. And when looking at those, we make sure that for the majority of the Caucasian youth, those arrest rates are the same as they are for minority youth. And when looking through there, they weren't. And so, we started looking more into those to see, because you can have disproportionality without necessarily having disparity at arrests. And so, we started looking through to see where these arrests were generating from. And as you can imagine, kids spend most of their hours at school. And so, a lot of these arrests, the place, I guess, that we could kind of focus down, that we can make an impact, was working with schools and trying to divert that school-to-prison pipeline. And so, looking more into the data, we saw that a lot of these arrests then came through as assaults or disturbing the pieces. So, Project Success was initially targeted for this population, for fourteen and fifteen-year-olds who received an assault or a disturbing the peace while at school. We worked with Georgetown University, we visited them twice, they came out here, provided technical assistance in looking at our data and, and getting the implementation going for this project. So, it's been up and running now for about seven months, and we had our first interim study completed by UNL. And so far, and of course, this is seven months, so it's kind of hard to tell because it's still in the infancy stages. But, the, one of the things that we definitely wanted to focus on was project, in Project Success, was getting kids into the system fast, because we wanted to affect that arrest rate. And we also wanted to get kids who are suspended as a result of being arrested back into school. So, when looking at the timeliness of how kids are coming into this, on the same day that the offense happens, our office is notified. So, it goes from LPD to the County Attorney's Office to our office in the same day, which is remarkable. And it's not how the system generally works. Usually, we saw about a three-month time period between, oops, between coming from an offense and then finally ending up in our office. The County Attorney, well, first of all, Lincoln Police was walking it up to the County Attorney's Office, County Attorney walking it over to our office. So, again, remarkable that that happens in the same day. We then are getting families in to our office within that same week of receiving the ticket and having them sign a plan with us. Kids go through the process, they, lots of it is restorative justice principles, so an apology letter to the victim, maybe there's a mediation, different things that infuse those restorative justice principles. That whole process is being completed within forty-one days. So, where, where we want it to be with our performance measures, then, once they complete this, then the arrest is sealed within the system. And so, it shows that the arrest was cleared. Usually, it'll show that it was referred onto the County Attorney's Office for diversion, but when someone's pulled over, it will be pulled up that they actually were arrested. If they complete Project Success, that's not the case. So, and we, our committee was asked to speak at the National DMC Conference in Baltimore in reference to this project. was asked to speak at the National DMC Conference in Baltimore in reference to this project. So we're pretty excited with that invitation.
Absolutely. It's tremendous success. So...
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved in second that we grant the contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for Project Success. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Abstain.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries two yes, one abstention. GG is a grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Back on Track Program. The commission will provide twenty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and the Hub will provide a twenty thousand dollars match for a total project cost of forty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. The grant period is from July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Again, this is federal money through the Crime Commission. Back on Track offers assistance to students who are struggling in school. The services are provided at Lincoln High, Northeast, Southeast, and East High School. Hub staff actually have offices located within the schools, and students are referred to their staff when they are struggling or having problems with attendance.
Move approval.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve this grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Back on Track Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Abstain.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries two yes, one abstention. 4HH is a grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Coordinated Response to Reducing Violence Against Women in Lancaster County. The commission will provide one hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars. Lancaster County will provide a match of fifty-two thousand fifty-five dollars. And the Lincoln Police Department and Family Violence Council will provide nineteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for a total project cost of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand forty-one dollars.
This is my last contract, and this is federal funding, again, through the Crime Commission. It funds overtime for officers to continue investigations where they are reaching out to victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. So they can, there can be one officer assigned to that case, and they can provide the outreach, maybe outside of normal work hours. It also provides a full-time domestic violence officer for the Lincoln Police Department. The Sheriff's Office has a part-time staff member devoted to this project as well. County Attorney's Office receives funding for a part-time attorney and a paralegal through this. And then Voices of Hope and Family Violence Council receive funding for advocacy through this. I would mention, too, that a significant part of this contract is participating in the threat advisory teams through Lincoln Police Department. And just to stress again the importance of this and the funding that you put towards this and the efforts that you put towards the administration of it. If you look back, a lot of the homicides that have occurred, they have been tied to domestic violence. And so this threat advisory team actually works together with the Lincoln Police Department when there are issues with domestic violence, and we think that women are in danger, make sure that everyone's working together in the team as a community to address it. So...
Move approval.
Okay. Second. It's moved in second that we approve this grant contract with the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Coordinated Response to Reducing Violence Against Women. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Abstain.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries two yes, one abstention.
Just a quick question. Do you have a total of the total amount of dollars that you have received here, just with these twenty-one grants?
For today, I do not, no.
Okay. I just did a quick total, and I'm not sure. I may have missed a couple as I was going through here very quickly. But I came up with somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And it could possibly be more because I may have missed some of those. But I mean, that's a tremendous number of dollars that we had, that the county has received in terms of grants. And, you know, you mentioned some really interesting statistics on the number of people who are being served by these. And so it's truly a very, very significant contribution to the county, to the welfare of the people. And so, actually, Sarah, just a really public thank you for your work in coordinating all of these different agencies, the work and so forth, and overseeing that. And then also another thing, too, I really have to give a shout out to the county attorney's office, to the Lincoln Public, to the Lincoln Police Department, to you for the work that you have done. So thank you so very, very much.
Thank you. And I would like to thank you, the board, too. And Commissioner Wilton, I mean, really hit it on the nail when he said it's an investment because the board has really chosen to invest in citizens in the county and to improve lives of those in the county. And so thank you. And I know that the agencies, as well as the citizens in the community that we work with, are very appreciative of these services. So, thank you.
You bet. Okay. Well, you have a great day.
Thank you. 4II is amendment to county contract C-16-162 with Allen Enterprises. For the annual supply of microfilming supplies, the estimated costs for the services will be increased by approximately twenty-five percent. For line item number four, the estimated expenditures will remain seven thousand five hundred dollars for the remainder of the contracted term.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the amendment to county contract C-16-162. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. JJ is amendment to county contract C-15-380 with National Everything Wholesale, using the city of Tucson contract number fifteen eleven forty-eight for janitorial and sanitation supplies, equipment, and related services. The amendment renews the contract from August second, two thousand sixteen, through August first, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Move approval.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with National Everything Wholesale. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. KK is amendment to county contract C-14-394 with Insight Public Sector, Inc., using the state of Minnesota contract number forty-nine, or, excuse me, four-eight-one-nine-two slash C dash one-zero-four-six bracket five for computer enterprise hardware, software, and services. The amendment extends the contract from July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Insight Public Sector. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. LL is amendment to county contract C-12-496 with Sprague Roofing Company for unit-priced miscellaneous roofing services. The amendment extends the contract from October sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, through February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed six thousand dollars.
Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Sprague Roofing Company. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. MM is an amendment to county contract C-12-497 with Weathercraft Company of Lincoln for unit-priced miscellaneous roofing services. The amendment extends the contract from October sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, through February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. The estimated cost to the county is not to exceed six thousand dollars.
Move approval. Second.
Moved in second that we approve the amendment to the county contract with Weathercraft Company. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. NN has a political subdivision tort claim filed against Lancaster County Corrections by Heather Bogan in the amount of nine hundred dollars.
Based on the recommendation of Corrections in the county attorney's office, I move denial of the claim. Second.
It's been moved in second that we deny the political subdivision tort claim. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Next are consent items. Receive and place on file Nebraska Surface Transportation Program Book fiscal years two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-two. Setting of a public hearing on August second, two thousand sixteen, for amusement, for an amusement license application from the Lin Quang Buddhist Temple to hold the Vu Lan Show on August thirteenth through the fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, at thirty-one seventy-five West Pleasant Hill Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. Move approval of consent items.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on the agenda, may do so at this time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rick DeBoer, president of Ask Me Two-Four-Six-Eight Local Union. Before I get started, I would like to ask the board's permission to go a little bit past the five-minute allotment. I have a letter here. I timed it. It's about six minutes. This was given to me just prior to...
Okay.
I could have someone stand up here and take over for me if, if that's okay. So... Anyway, I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can. But before I get started, I would like to thank my support group back behind me. We would have had many more here today, but because of the fear of retaliation and the fact that we have been working hard last week, including Saturday, to try to get this FEMA projects done, we have a FEMA inspection coming up. And so hopefully, we can get that taken care of and money back to the taxpayers of Lancaster County. There are several people back behind me. Most of them, all of them are employees of Lancaster County. One of them is a private citizen, former highway road superintendent that is retired sixteen years ago. So I'd just like to thank them for their support as well today. Afterwards, if the board has any comments or questions, I would be happy to try to answer them. I would like to start with a letter that was handed to me just prior to walking in here. "To whom it may concern, I am expressing my concern to the county board that I am full support of any action they should take before to put pressure on the county engineer to remove the county's maintenance highway superintendent, Bob Jacobs, from his duty." His recent subordination or mistreatment of the subordinates is appalling. And the county is holding themselves as a liability with him on the staff. I am, you have to bear with me, I'm trying to read this. "I am putting full support behind that and asking the board that they do whatever they can do to fix this problem and make..." And I want to go on records today by stating that. "Best regards, John Jerichak." Now for my letter. Commissioners, on May eighteenth, you received a letter from our county, from our attorney, Gary Young, regarding the management practices of our roads maintenance superintendent, Bob Jacobs. On June seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, we received a response back from you regarding that letter. In your response, you stated that as a board, you've expressed those concerns to county engineer Pam Dingman and gave her a number of recommendations on how to best handle the situation. However, you also have pointed out in your response that she is an elected official, that you have no legal authority over personal matters in her department. I have talked to engineer Dingman and Link about this matter, and she informs me that she has no choice but to stay within the parameters that HR and the assistant county attorney have given her. When I check with HR, they inform me that they can advise, suggest, but it is up to the department head to implement it. Seems like everyone wants to pass the buck, and no one wants to take responsibility. Three of the current board members knew that these unprofessional management practices have been going on for a long time, and we were assured that when you appointed Ms. Dingman as an interim county engineer, that these management practices would stop. Well, it's been over two years, and they still haven't stopped. Just within the last few months, we have had over fifteen employees come forward with the documentation about some of the unprofessional management practices. Some of these practices include, but are not limited to, intimidation, retaliation, and bullying. These practices have created a hostile working environment that have caused many of our most experienced employees to take early retirement and have lowered the morale to a new low for many of us that are still here. It has gotten so bad that one employee, Mr. Jacobs, was told by the assistant county attorney and the county engineer that he was not to have any supervisory authority over that employee at all. Since that time, we have had people come forward saying they have witnessed Mr. Jacobs violate that order. Now ask yourself if that is the type of management you want Lancaster County to have. I would like to read from the county personnel rules regarding harassment and retaliation. Number two, the scope. This policy applies to all county employees in the classified and unclassified service. This policy also applies to members of the public, contractors, customers, or other persons conducting business with the county or on county-owned or leased property. Number three, harassment defined. Harassment is conduct towards another person or identifiable group of persons, including, but not limited to, unwelcome comments or other conduct that unreasonably interferes with an individual's work or creates an intimidating, hostile, or offensive working environment. Number eight, retaliation prohibited. This policy is intended to encourage individuals to report incidents of harassment. Retaliation against an individual for reporting or complaining of harassment or enforcing this policy is strictly prohibited. For the purpose of this policy, retaliation means adverse actions against individuals because they have in good faith reported instances of harassment or participated in or have been witnesses in procedure to redress a complaint of harassment. Harassment prohibited. Any conduct which constitutes harassment in the workplace or which contributes to the existence of a hostile working environment is defined herein and hereby expressively prohibited. Any county employee who engages in such conduct shall be subject to disciplinary actions, including, but not limited to, suspension, demotion, or termination of employment. You wrote in your response back to us that you, as a board, will continue to have serious discussions with engineer Dingman until this problem is resolved. You also have informed us that she is an elected official and that you have no authority over her regarding personnel matters. However, there is one thing you do have authority over, and that is the power of the purse. We are asking the board that if this matter cannot be resolved in the very near future, that you would exercise your authority by using the one option that you seem to have.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Could you, do you have liberty to speak more specifically about Jacobs and his management style? You may not want to do that, and if you don't, I would understand.
Some, I mentioned intimidation. We've had fifteen people, we have more than that here today or right out, and a lot of these are different people than the original fifteen. But they would come forward and said that he would just come into their area, whether it was on the road they were working or in their shop area, and he would just stand there and stare with his arms crossed and just like, "I'm watching you." Retaliation, you know, has been known, and we've got documentation where someone stood up against him. It's not long, he's in their area checking it out, and it's not too long before paperwork comes, like, "You're not doing this right," so you're going to get coaching papers or a reprimand. And this all happens right after they take a stand against Mr. Jacobs. So those are some of the examples. We have, we have even instances of stalking after work hours. That's been documented that the assistant county attorney has been made aware of, and that was the reasoning why he was not allowed to have any supervisory authority over that person any longer. Those are just some of the few things.
How long has this been going on?
It's been going on for many years. It goes for a while, then everything's good for a while, and then we, then it goes bad for a while. for a while, and we bring it forward to the engineer, whether it was Don Thomas or Pam, and then it straightens out for a while, but it always goes back eventually.
What is it that you would like to see done?
We don't believe that the county should have someone in that authority have that kind of power over the employees. I mean, he's already been told not to supervise one. If he can't supervise one, why should he supervise any of us? Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Hello, Josh Basson. I'm an equipment operator for Lancaster County. I've worked for the county for twenty years. I'm the employee that has been pulled out from under Mr. Jacobs' supervision. I think it's important that I come up and verify why. Numerous incidents were brought up over a two-year period to Pam. Many problems happened before that. One of the big reasons I finally stepped up and said I had enough is because there was a distinct line from managing-
There was a what?
A distinct line from managing to just personal vendettas. One of them, as an example, as you asked, Mr. Jacobs came up to me out of nowhere. My mother had passed, and it was about two years ago, and he walked up to me and basically told me, you know, sorry about your mother, very insincerely, others were there to witness it, and then proceeded to tell me three different times how good-looking my mother was. Then walked off. There's multiple, multiple incidents of this stuff. There's a huge lot of guys here that represent every corner of Lancaster County, the shop and all four districts. And like Rick said, there's a lot of other people here that would like to be here, are scared to either be here, maybe not scared, but don't want to deal with it, shouldn't have to deal with it. Quite frankly, I don't feel any of us should have to deal with it. So I guess we could sit up here for, I don't know how many hours, let everybody tell their story. But quite frankly, it's pretty appalling to what it's come to and what it's led up to at this point. And things have been said to me from Mrs. Dingman is that, yes, I have to go within the parameters of the county attorneys and HR, but it looks like everybody else is pointing fingers back that way. That's the way I see it. It's come to the point where it's obvious that something, for some reason, doesn't want to be dealt with on this, and none of us know what it is. But I think there's plenty enough information. You could just go look at the last ten years of turnover rates through your HR department, figure out how many people have left, how many people have quit, what positions have gone to the streets that have never gone to the streets before, not wanting to work under these conditions. There's some pretty factual stuff there, I'm guessing, so on that note, I just felt it was important that I come up and say something.
Hang on a minute. What is the process or was the process by which you were removed from his supervision?
Well, to try to make a long story short, it was about, it's been now a year I've been out from under his supervision. It took about a year to deal with it. I complained to the union, I personally talked to Pam, brought these issues up, and they just kind of kept happening. As another example, once I brought up enough stuff that I was out from under his supervision, then it comes to find out a few months later that my machine personally was in being worked on and for some stuff, servicing and whatnot, Mr. Jacobs took it upon himself to crawl around on my machine and try to take photos for whatever reason.
I was the guy that witnessed it after I was told by Josh that he wasn't supposed to be-
We don't talk from the audience. Yeah, okay, yeah, please. You'll have to come forward if you want to talk. But anyway, let's have him finish first.
So that's, that's an example of, you know, he was told to do something, let some time pass, and here he comes again as an example of what he wants to do. So after that, I brought that up again. I haven't heard a whole lot, but the next step was, these guys are being gone after personally.
When I, I'm interested in the process. Who made the decision?
Well, I had to-
And how did you get that decision?
I had to go to the union president, speak with him, bring up a lot of these issues, and had to go seek out the attorney, Gary Young, and we had to sit down in a private meeting with the HR, Pam, Kristy Bauer from the county's attorney's office, and had a meeting on this stuff. Then they came to the decision that they should do this, both me and Mr. Jacobs attended. I attended just to try to help out with the situation by going to continuum. I didn't feel that I was the one that needed to be there, but I was trying to work with the situation. That never was resolved, but just, once, once this secondary supervising came in and all this other stuff happened, it all just dissolved.
So it was the intervention of the county attorney's office that actually got this resolved?
I feel so, yes.
Was not Ms. Dingman acting in her capacity as director?
No, I feel like it's all been forced by us. I don't think that any steps have been taken to help the situation without being pushed into it, much like this.
All the other dozens of people who share your perspective on these issues would have to go through a similar process in order to get some resolution to their grievances?
I'd say that it seems to come to that because everything else that is taken care of personally or just like one-on-one, there seems to be no resolve.
Have you any idea why the county engineer is not moving on this issue?
No, actually, I think that's the moving on question at this point. Thank you.
Please introduce yourself and-
Shane Sluslock, heavy equipment mechanic, Lancaster County. Been here about, in October, it'll be five years. So like I said, I'm generally not one to get into other people's affairs, but I was told by several union members and Josh himself that Bob had not, no supervision over him, and Josh brought his machine in for a service, and I was working on it, doing a two-thousand-hour service, and Bob come back there and noticed a few things and just kind of started like, what, oh, he did that, what did he do that for? And I wasn't even sure, like, what was going on. So I asked him to explain, and I mean, there was a few things he pointed out which wasn't out of the ordinary for when it comes in for service, there due maintenance, there's things that need to be fixed. We elaborated on that. He left for a while, and then he come back with the camera, camera, and started taking pictures of Josh's machine and everything after he was told, you know, that he cannot have supervision over him. And it just felt to me, like I said, at that point, I didn't know what kind of extent we were into here because I wasn't involved at that point, but I was, I did know that he was not to have supervision at that point, and it just felt like he was just pushing the issue, just, and he should have known better, you know. So I'm just standing up for these guys from what I've seen personally. They've been-
Was there, was there another supervisor then for the gentleman that just spoke?
His supervisor, right, at that time, I believe it was Larry Erns, which has recently retired, and Mike Clark is a supervisor out of District Four, the Raymond Shop. So I'm, like I said, these guys have been here a lot longer than I have. I'll be here five years. Great place to work for the most part. I mean, they, I think everybody will agree that this is escalating. I mean, it just, there's no, there's no end to it, it seems, so. And like I said, I know there's a lot of people out there that work for Lancaster County that they just feel like there's going to be retribution or a target on their back. I encourage you guys to come down and talk to some of the employees, get their opinions if that ever fits into your schedule.
You described the photo, taking the photographs and all that. Is that unusual?
From my point of view, from the time that I've been there, we've never, I've never seen anybody take a picture unless, you know, if it was for training purposes or, you know, something that needed to be changed on a machine where we were just dealing specifically with the manufacturer, like as per Caterpillar or Murphy at John Deere, you know, if we were having mechanical problems of that sort. Nothing from the superintendent's standpoint of view that I think, you know, he doesn't have, you know, from my knowledge, from what I understand, he doesn't have mechanical training of any sorts, you know, and I've offered to talk to him about them sort of things, and he, he does not, we can't seem to get into a discussion about that, so.
How would you characterize then the behavior of Mr. Jacobs? Would you say that he was engaging in deliberate harassment?
Yes, exactly. That's how I felt, so I took that back to Josh, you know, that that's a problem because he was told not to do so from what my understanding was. So after I did that, I think he took, he took it to the union. I think they tried to do something about it, and then Bob started coming back ten times, eight, ten times a day, and he would walk through my area where I was working, and he would just stand there, and he'd walk by my bench, he'd walk by me, and he'd stare at me. And one day I asked him if there was a problem with what I was doing, was I performing my job not up to par, like what, and he, he told me he was checking wear and tear on the machines, the chains, the mold boards, which I thought was what I was hired to do, you know, but I don't know, he told me that that was his job, so I said, well, I, I don't know, that doesn't seem right, but if, what, you know, like I said, ten times a day seemed awful excessive, you know, where the machine had been in there for two or three days for service, you know, and you're coming back there eight, ten times a day for three days in a row, did you miss something the first day that you were here? You know, why are you continuously coming back here, whereas up to that point, he wouldn't come back there once a month, you know, so I just felt like that was retribution on his part for what I had witnessed, you know, and I felt somebody needed to know about it, so.
Okay. Well, I thank you so much. Did you have another question?
No.
Okay. Okay. Gary? By the way, I do want to thank you all for coming in. I know that this is taking time away from your work, and you have been expressing your opinions, and so thank you.
Gary Aldridge, Lincoln, Nebraska. Some housekeeping chores. Not shattering, just routine. Thursday last, the home phone rings, two-ten local time. No, really, zero, two-ten. It's the Army guy calling from Kuwait. He has overlooked the time difference. For him, it is about noon. The band of brothers and sisters on that Thursday will be in Kabul, Afghanistan, and then KAF. They arrived there yesterday. Two articles in The Star Sunday last. Air temperature one-two-nine degrees in Kuwait. Blast kills eighty in Kabul. Oppressive heat traded for religious intolerance. Afghanistan will not be much fun. It is serious business. Another band without sisters. Picture of Pious, my grandson, oldest grandson, is the one on the far right, left. Legion ball, Pious as Union Bank. Last year, Pious beat Norris for Class B championship. I suggested then this board recognize and congratulate both teams. That fell where, on stone ears? Mea culpa. I should have linked the congrats with a million TIF or visitor promotion dollars. Sure thing then. This year, Pious UB played as Class A. Class A championship at Omaha Scut. First game UB is handled roughly by Creighton Prep. Losing bracket Sunday last, UB v. Grand Island. One team goes on, one team goes home. UB is home on the scoreboard. Bottom of nine, Grand Island up two. UB with two outs and runners at the corners. The UB batter strikes out. Number three, Nick Aldridge. If I could, I would not substitute another for that last batter. That is unfair to someone else. I take photographs, photographs at these events, over nine thousand of UB just this year. I could focus, pun or not, on one player. Others mostly do. There are nine players on the field. Every one that wears a uniform is part of the team. My focus then is the game, not just one player. I told several at the last out of the last inning of the last game, my contract was finished. I am a free agent. Alas, there are other grandkitties. For UB, game over, season finished. There was disappointment and hugs and some tears. If this event is the worst thing that happens in the life of those young men, they are very, very fortunate indeed. I see this, they do not just yet. The Nebraska Budget Act, aka thirteen Nebraska Revised Statute 501 at SEC, is a magnificent uselessness or a useless magnificence because it is illusory. It gives, in theory, the appearance that taxing political subdivisions will listen with great care when citizens, taxpayers, owners offer, quote, "support, opposition, criticism, suggestions, or observations." In fact, there is nothing in the Budget Act that directs a political subdivision take or refrain from action if citizens offer support, opposition, criticism, suggestions, or observations. Thank you. A, quote, "notice of budget hearing and summary will be published soon." I have been down this path several times. During the budget hearing agenda item, I will approach. County clerk personnel will direct I raise my hand and solemnly swear or affirm. I will lower my hand, ask, please repeat that, and refuse to swear or affirm. I detect nothing in the Budget Act that requires an oath or affirmation. These are disputes or differences that build case law. Ain't democracy beautiful?
Okay, well, thank you. I just was going to make one comment, you know, about the baseball season or whatever. It's not how you, it's not whether you win or lose, but it's how you play the game. Okay, anybody else? All right.
Next is number seven, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, July twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, at eight-thirty a.m. in the Bill Oxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, August second, two thousand sixteen, at nine, nine a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live and is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on Five City TV, Cable Channel Five. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE.gov under Five City TV Video On Demand or Five City TV on YouTube.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Let's move in second that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Okay, meeting is adjourned, and let's move on to the Board of Equalization.
Copy the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall to the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Also, in attendance this morning is Scott Gaines from the county assessor's office. Agenda item one or minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, July nineteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Move approval.
Second.
Let's move in second that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Second.
Let's move in second that we approve the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number three is a public hearing for motor vehicle tax exemption applications, this is for Capitol Humane Society, Parkview Christian School, and Trinity United Methodist Church.
Okay, we'll open this public hearing on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications, and seeing no one in the room to speak either in support of, opposition to, or in a neutral position, I will close the public hearing.
Move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Please call, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. Number four is public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to County Board of Equalization business, not on the agenda, we do so at this time.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Don't you have to close the public hearing?
I did close the public hearing.
Oh, did you?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Then I will second.
Okay. Um, okay. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn, please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Okay, meeting adjourned.